Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Adelanto City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Adelanto and the Victor Valley Chambers of Commerce. I am Mark Crefield, the Hisparia and Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce CEO, and it is my honor to serve this forum as your moderator. This is one of two candidate forums which were divided by using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate, and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponent answers the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. We will finish up with closing statements again with one minute for each candidate. All of you participating in this forum have the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt the other candidates' time or disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum and will publish it on both the Adelanto and Victor Valley Chambers websites and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Sonia Miranda, the Adelanto Chamber Office Manager. Sonia will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion and closing statements, she will hold up a yellow sign. She will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will thank you and we will mute your microphone. I would now like to introduce the four candidates that are on this call who are running for the Adelanto City Council election here with us today. In alphabetical order, Dominic Cisneros, Tracy M. Hernandez, Joy Jeanette, and Jay Sean Johnson. Unfortunately, Edward Reyes was unable to join us. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which candidates will speak was also using a blind draw. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Jay Sean Johnson. You have one minute.
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity. It's also great to see the other candidates as well. My name is Jay Sean Johnson and I am running for the Adelanto City Council. And my platform is pretty simple. It's time to go back to the basics. A lot of times when candidates are running for office, there's a lot of promises that are made because they sound good. But I think at this point, we need to go back to the basics and understand how important it is to go to a space where you can actually accomplish the things that you've promised. The five things that I wish to accomplish are governmental transparency, favoring employees over contracts, positive policing, activities for the youth, and definitely bridging the regional divide between the northern and southern regions of the city of Adelanto. Government transparency, having a platform where individuals are able to report information that they have without fear of retribution. Employees over contracts, making sure that we don't have situations where contractors are coming in and asking for increases in the middle of their projects. Positive policing, changing the climate between police and the citizens that they serve for as far as the
Thank you. Dominic Cisneros, you have one minute.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Cisneros. I was a Navy petty officer, so I served in the United States Navy. I have six overseas tours. When I came back to the States, I achieved my bachelor's degree in sociology. Upon getting my bachelor's in sociology, I went and got my master's degree in business administration. Currently, I'm a local realtor, so I service up here in Adelanto, all the Victor Valley as well as going down the hill. Something that I want to see here in Adelanto is to promote economic growth. I want to provide better opportunities and I want to make sure that everyone is able to, you know, to benefit from the growth that we are going to have. It's just a matter of time.
Thank you. Tracy Hernandez, you have one minute. You have to unmute yourself, Tracy.
Sorry, I'm just nervous a little bit. My name is Tracy Hernandez. I am running for Adelanto City Council. I believe there's a strong disconnect between Adelanto residents and the city. Now more than ever, Adelanto needs unity and not division. Unfortunately, for some, this is a game. For some, it's about telling up the number of seniors in our community that have been helped or about the amount of council meetings we've spoken at. For the majority of us, though, it's not a game. For me, it's not a game. This election is about our neighborhoods, our streets, our city, our lives, our voices to be collectively heard. Adelanto politics tend to be very exclusionary with similar people cycling in and out. This leads to us to have a changeless local government that upholds traditionalist policies which don't always reflect the needs of our diverse community. I want to thank the Adelanto and Victor Chambers for putting this forum together and for the viewers that are watching. I'll try to be as transparent and honest with my answers as I can.
Thank you, Tracy. Joy Jeanette, you have one minute.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Joy Jeanette and I am a longtime resident of our community. I currently serve you as your council member as well as vice chairman of the Victor Valley Transit Authority and board member of the Mojave Desert and Mountain Recycling Authority, representing the residents of Atlanta. I'm very involved not only in the seniors but with the Lions Club and recycling glasses and so forth. And my proven record is that I've had 25 years experience in the corporate world. I have my master's degree in organizational management, reconstructing corporations. It's a pleasure to come before you this evening. Thank you.
We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper and please wrap up your answer before we are obligated to mute you. Question one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience, and education do you have that suggests Adelanto residents should trust you with their city? Dominic Cisneros, you have 90 seconds.
Okay, perfect. Let me start with my education. Like I said, I do hold a master's degree in business from the University of Redlands. There I studied the theory, practices of all kinds of, or all sorts of different business principles per se. I was even chosen twice to help two different businesses grow as a special assignment. For example, one of the stores that I helped, it was a small toy store. My assignment was pretty much to help them grow. They were a dying business. As it is, you know, a toy store, they're not coming anymore. Toys R Us, you know, they departed. So what I had to do was, you know, keep them surviving. So I implemented a marketing strategy. I was able to increase their revenue by 20%. Another company that I got to work with was an avocado company. It was avocado oil and they were looking to take their business international. I prepared an in-depth analysis on which I was able to pretty much prepare a entry barrier, what's going to happen for that country, what they should expect to see in revenue, and what they should expect to see as far as sales. Not just my education skills in business helped me either, but serving the Navy, I was responsible for my team's lives. It takes real leadership for someone to trust you with their life, which I was so proud to earn from my team. Currently, like I said, I'm a local realtor, so my clients are trusting me and helping me with probably the biggest purchase of their lives. Just as I've earned the trust from my military team, my clients I work with, I look forward to earning the trust with the city.
Tracy Hernandez, you have 90 seconds.
My 12-plus year in career in education, retail, customer service, and public relations have provided me with skills and insight that I believe would be useful as a member of the Adelanto City Council in serving the public and in dealing with our neighboring municipalities. I know what it is to allocate funds properly and spend wisely when it comes to budgeting money. I oversaw multimillion dollar school district budgets which are larger than the city of Adelanto's budget, our current budget here, in my secretarial and clerical positions within the San Bernardino City Unified School District in addition to overseeing Adelanto Elementary School District's Transportation Department as well as running my own business. This experience as a whole proves me to be the most qualified candidate when it comes to fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Joy Jeanette, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, as a proven record, I brought in Clark Pacific, California's largest concrete manufacturer. Attracted three major home builders, developers, frontier communities, D.R. Horton and K.H.O., who all came into our city bringing jobs. I developed citywide solar projects at no cost to the city, saving millions of dollars in electrical costs from the city's general fund. I'm growing our city by bringing in Boring Company, a division of Tesla and SpaceX. I transformed the way we buy automobiles by attracting Copart, the largest online auto sales company in America. Also by building the largest full-service ARCO AM PM gas station, which includes semi-truck fueling and accommodations. My new project is the best western executive residency, 90-room, four-story hotel with adjoining 5,293 square foot full-service bar and restaurant at U.S. 395 and Seneca Road. My experience and my proven record speaks for itself. Thank you.
Jay Sean Johnson, you have 90 seconds.
So I approach this question from two different perspectives. I approach it as a family member, family man rather, and a business owner. I look back in 2007. As a father of six, my daughter was diagnosed with leukemia. And during the time of her diagnosis, during the two years that she battled with leukemia, literally that became my life. I could not focus on anything other than making sure that I was advocating for her health. Unfortunately, in 2009, she passed away. And when she passed away, a part of me passed away with her as well as my identity. And so from that, I had to understand how that caused me to have to be on public assistance. It just changed the entire dynamic of how I operated. And during that time, I was able to find strategic ways to save money. I was able to then, two years later, purchase my home here in Adelanto. And so from that, I've been able to utilize my experience of struggling and taking that to allow it to allow me to make much more financially responsible decisions and also sharing the information that I've learned along the way. So I've had plenty of individuals come to me and help me to advise them on how to start their businesses, how to own homes as well. So operating from a financially responsible mindset is really, really important. And I think that that's something that I can definitely bring to the council, understanding the importance of financial obligations and making sure that you have futuristic goals to reserve those finances as well as when you do spend them that you do so responsibly.
Question two. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing those goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council members? Tracy Hernandez, you have 90 seconds.
I would like to see Adelanto establish a food policy committee working to improve food system outcomes and prevent food insecurity in our community by expanding access to healthy food. Additionally, I would focus on issues and not personalities if I disagreed with a decision made by council. I would voice my opinion without compromising the reputation of the city or its employees. Likewise, if fellow council member is in conflict with goals that are presented to them, I would seek to understand their perspective and look for compromise when needed so ideas can shine through while producing better outcomes. When resolved properly, conflicts can lead to better ideas which in turn will help Adelanto to become better. Thank you.
Joy Jeanette, you have 90 seconds.
My goals are to continue our ongoing programs, expand and develop resident committees, birth a community garden, and clean up the illegal dumping sites around our city. I will work hard to provide seniors and families with safe neighborhoods because we know that together we can make this a reality. It takes teamwork, you know, and we have what it takes. Together, we can get it done.
Jay Sean Johnson, you have 90 seconds.
As stated in my opening, I've chosen five points that I feel are either considered nonpartisan.
You muted yourself, Jay Sean. You need to unmute yourself, Jay Sean. There you go. You're really low volume, Jay Sean.
Tracy's tapping. It says it's unmuted.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. Sonia, start the time over, please.
Okay, thank you so much. Wait, I'm at 15 seconds?
No, Sonia, start the time over, please.
And we have Edward that's coming in the room. I don't know if you want me to, what do you want me to do with that?
No, we've already started the forum and I would like to go ahead and continue. So let's go ahead and continue.
Okay. All right, so as stated before, I made it a point to choose a platform that was considered either nonpartisan or bipartisan. These are issues that affect all of the residents of the city of Adelanto. Like I said, government transparency, employees over contracts, positive policing, doing things for the youth, and definitely bridging the regional divide between the northern and the southern regions of the city. And so because of those issues, if there are issues that arise that create some sort of conflict, you know, a lot of times we talk about compromise, but with compromise, you usually end up with someone on one side not being happy. So instead of compromising, I believe that we should be collective, collaborative, and comprehensive. And by bringing all of those elements together, we can make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and that everyone's needs are being met.
Dominic Cisneros, you have 90 seconds.
My major goal for the city is really just to grow. I'd like for the planning commission to really focus on bringing in office buildings, warehouses, companies that pay well, so our residents don't have to drive to Victorville, don't have to drive down the hill, just so they can stay local. You know, because we're small, I definitely see this being a gem here in the high desert. You know, we just have to make the right moves, right decisions, and spend the money properly. If my colleagues disagree with me, just like I do my everyday job now with my clients, you know, we negotiate. There's no perfect idea. I welcome my colleagues to poke holes at any policy I propose, any idea that I propose. That way, when we are ready to roll and we're ready to implement it, we're much worked out all the kinks and we're good to go. And by collaborating, it's not just my idea anymore, but it's our idea. So it's not about taking credit for the idea, but making sure that that idea, that proposal, that actually happens so the city can benefit from it.
Thank you. Question three. You should be aware of the important role economic development plays in a sustainable city. The city of Adelanto has not seen any type of growth in the past 25 years until recently. How do you plan on improving and attracting more economic development? Joy Jeanette, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, sir. Right now, we are busy all over the city. Economic development is the top of our priority. Right now, we have the largest window company in America that is coming into our city. They've already bought the land and they're starting to build. There is all kinds of building going around our city, even so much that the houses that are being built are already sold. You could hardly find a rental because one of the policies of our city is that 50% of the business that comes into our city, the building of the business, excuse me, that is new to our city as well as old, needs to hire 50% of their personnel and have them live in the city of Atlanta. That is a milestone compared to what it used to be. Most people used to go down the hill as we know. But we're excited about it and just take a drive all through the west side of Atlanta and see all the economic development, it's ongoing, and manufacturing, we're pushing for a lot of manufacturing. That brings POS, point of cells. That's what we need. We need a lot of point of cells, bringing funding into our city to be sustainable. Thank you.
Jay Sean Johnson, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. So this requires a twofold approach. Bringing new business is certainly a priority, but we got to go back to the contrast between the regions of our city. We can't ignore the concerns of the residents on the northern side and then expect for businesses not to come in and question why the north side has not been revitalized. As members of the council, we have to be willing to be ambassadors for our city. We have to capitalize on our strengths and even more so the endless potential that this city has. And then even go one step further and make everybody aware of that endless potential that this city has. It's imperative that we find incentives. Excuse me, it's imperative that we find incentives to make sure we continue to foster a business-friendly atmosphere within the city. And we need to be willing to go to the industries we would like to see in our city rather than hoping and waiting that they come to us. Being proactive and vigilant as a council as a whole, working towards the same goal, we can truly be the jewel of the desert.
Dominic Cisneros, you have 90 seconds.
This is where my business expertise can really help out the city. Like if I had a business and I drove around the city, I can tell you right now, I wouldn't want to plant my roots here unless if I was getting a deal of a lifetime on a property. What first needs to really change is our aesthetic looks. You know, we have trash all over the city. We need to really actually enforce all this legal dumping because people take this as a joke. The other day when I was driving down Victor Street, I literally saw large big screen TV boxes in the middle of the park, in like the, in the middle of the sidewalk. These fines are a joke. The punishment is a joke. We need to increase this drastically. As a business owner, what I see is the city doesn't care, nor do the residents. So why would I care to put my business here? After we clean up the trash, get all of that in order, we need to make sure that all these empty lots are maintained. You know, not with all these weeds, not with dead bushes everywhere. This needs to look nice. Another thing we need to get strict on is really like making sure our lots are clean. At this point, you know, now what we can do to be more aesthetically pleasing, start improving the roads, you know, start planting more trees. It kills me to drive around Victorville and see, you know, their streets are filled with beautiful trees, nice bushes, and here we are with like maybe one Joshua tree. I definitely want to see that aesthetic pleasing. Once that, you know, once we have that aesthetic look, then the businesses are going to look like, oh, wow, you know, Adelanto, they care, their residents care. You know, I want to go ahead, I want to set my shop up here. That's how we're going to promote business and really bring it to us.
Thank you. Tracy Hernandez, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. I would start by identifying gaps in Adelanto's policies, excuse me, plans, codes, and our zoning regulations that can move our community closer to economic, social, and environmental developmental goals. I also would continue to focus on building up Adelanto's infrastructure by fixing up our roads and making Adelanto more presentable to the business community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go on to the fourth question. Describe the biggest issue facing the city and your approach to solving it. Jay Sean Johnson, you have 90 seconds.
So I'm sure there'll be many answers to this question by the candidates and some of those answers will probably be about roads and trash and the financial state of the city and so forth. And these are absolutely very, very important issues. But just like my platform, I think we need to go back to the basics. I think the biggest issue that we have in this city is lack of communication, period. As a commissioner, I had requested that we have some sort of centralized way to be able to communicate. Seems like something kind of got started, but the follow-up hasn't been the greatest. So we have to understand that with so many ways that society receives information from social media to cable news, streaming services like Netflix and Hulu, being notified of local news and events has become more complicated, yet more important than ever. So we have to find a centralized way to reach the residents. All too often, residents hear about things after the event has happened and as commissioner, like I said, I suggested that we have some sort of communication system. And maybe in this case, we'll have a system where we opt everyone in and then they, if they so choose to opt themselves out from that communication. But I know a lot of times we make sure that the residents are aware of council meetings. And a lot of times, again, they have to go to the city's website, but if you forget to even go to the city's website to know that there is a council meeting, then it's defeating the purpose. So we have to find a much better way to be able to communicate with all the residents. I know that we've used the water bills to try to do so, but if the residents are anything like me, I don't open my water bill, I just pay it online. So we have to find better ways to communicate with the residents.
Thank you. Dominic Cisneros, you have 90 seconds.
I think really that the last question was our biggest issue. It's definitely economic growth. We need more businesses, we need more businesses to come to Adelanto. Without having businesses come to the city, we're going to continue to struggle with debt. The ideas that I proposed about cleaning up the city and making it more aesthetically pleasing, like yes, that's definitely the idea of what we need to do, but that's not going to happen overnight. You know, we need the money, we need to do something. We need, we need an idea of what we can do now. We need now business. What can we do now to attract? So what I would like to do is really offer these businesses something great incentive just to come in to our city. You know, we want to bring in a warehouse manufacturer that can employ 200-plus residents or whatever number we deem that, you know, necessary, that makes sense. What I would like to do is implement a tactic similar to Walmart and Costco, what they do with their suppliers. You know, we're going to offer that warehouse to come in on a contract with an amazing tax rate. Once that contract's over, you know, the warehouse fully established, making good profit, making money, we'll give them a shorter term next, for the next contract, a little slightly higher tax rate. Then, now that they're fully put their roots in, they're established, you know, that's when we're going to blindside them. We're going to give them with that higher tax rate. What this does, this is making it extremely hard for that company to leave now. What we've done is we've had them set their roots. So what's going to happen is going to end up costing them more money to leave than it would just to be that tax rate. That's exactly what Walmart, what Costco, what they do with their products, with their suppliers. They buy them at bulk, you know, they give them a deal for the first year contracts and then they make it hard for
Thank you. Tracy Hernandez, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Adelanto is now faced with a daunting challenge of rebuilding our economy and continuing to create jobs post-COVID-19. This crisis has opened up a unique opportunity to push for significant long-term change and innovation for Adelanto. And as a council member, I would champion this by making more efficient use of federal funding, finding new sources of capital to target specific projects and programs, and incentivizing rather than delaying investments in our community that will be able to accelerate the meaningful recovery that solves chronic longstanding problems. Adelanto can also invest in programs that ease transition to the new normal. Programs that ease labor dislocation, including job matching and reskilling, would be crucial for building the workforce of our future. Additionally, 95% of Adelanto has been identified as an opportunity zone. It is up to city council and staff to promote our city and business to the business community in order to attract more industries to our city. I would also focus on building new pillars in Adelanto that do not include prisons or cannabis such as manufacturing and industrial, I'm sorry, industrial growth with more focus on green jobs as to help with climate change. Adelanto can be the leader in green movement, job movement, seeing as we have a vast amount of vacant land that can be used to build out this industry. Thank you.
Joy Jeanette, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, sir. My very first night in 2018 on the dais, I directed our city manager to conduct a full audit into our finances and our entire city. Little did we know at that time, the shambles that it was in from the prior regime that had been directing our city. And I want you to know, as of December 2020, this audit will be complete and we're excited about it. Also, after being closed for three years, I fought to reopen the senior center. Kicks Cafe Senior Club and Curbside renovated the entire center at no cost to the city. While Kicks Cafe Senior Club and Curbside is closed during this pandemic, it is delivering food and supplies to our seniors and residents daily. I was able through Victor Valley Transit Authority to route the bus right to the front door of the Kicks Cafe Senior Club. And due to the excessive fireworks, graffiti, and illegal dumping, the silent majority, residents on patrol, was birthed with an all volunteer staff making a difference in our community. I've been very involved in Relay for Life, cancer survivors, super scouts, intellectually challenged youngsters, and other food chairs partnering with several 501s, 3Cs, delivering much-needed necessities, which includes backpacks for our children, and it's no longer a dream, but a reality. I support Little League, elite soccer, and all family events at the Cat at Lamb's.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. We will conclude today's forum with closing remarks. Dominic Cisneros, you have one minute.
Well, first off, thank you for this opportunity. What Adelanto needs, we need someone with a business mindset. And obviously, having my master's in business, this is something that I can definitely bring to the city to make change. You know, it's time for growth and we need someone with a business mindset that knows how to work with these companies. That way, we're not getting, you know, we're not getting, we're not losing opportunity. We're not losing revenue out of some of these contracts that all these, you know, multi-billion dollar companies are coming into. So, you know, when it comes down to it, it's going to be a business mindset and that's the perfect candidate. So again, thank you for guys' time. You guys have a great evening.
Tracy Hernandez, you have one minute.
I'd like to say thank you again to the Adelanto and Victor Valley Chambers for putting together this candidate forum and to thank all the Adelanto residents for watching this forum as well. This campaign won't be easy. My fellow candidates are making it challenging. I need to work twice as hard to show Adelanto residents that I'm not a lock-sit boat, I'm not a puppet, nor in someone's pocket, but that I am my own voice and my own vote. Doing this won't be easy and I don't dare believe I can win this election alone, but I know it'll be worth that extra effort in the end. Doing this won't be easy and I don't dare believe I can win this election alone, but I know it'll be worth that extra effort in the end. I am an Adelanto resident, just like you, trying to make our city better. I ask that you vote for me November 3rd. Vote for Tracy Hernandez for Adelanto City Council. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Joy Jeanette, you have one minute.
Again, thank you very much, Mark, and for having us tonight. You know, the safety of our seniors, children, and families is my top priority. I support law enforcement in our fire department. I'm founder, president of National Spirit of Freedom Veterans First. My strengths are in business and organizational management, reconstruction corporations and programs, as I mentioned before. I will defend our constitutional rights. And one of the things that we need to remember is that our city will go forward tomorrow, excuse me, a wonderful, wonderful thing that's happening. The Mojave River Agency, Water Agency invites us to attend the groundbreaking ceremonies to celebrate the start of construction on the extension of the Regional Recharge and Recovery Project in Atlanta. Fantastic development all over the high desert. This begins here, September 30th, tomorrow at 9:30. 11555 Olivine Road, Victorville, California, and you just take-
Thank you. Jay Sean Johnson, you have one minute.
As echoed by the other candidates, thank you very much for this opportunity of the joint chambers coming together to make this possible for us to be able to present ourselves. Once again, my name is Jay Sean Johnson. I'm running for Adelanto City Council. My website is johnsonforadelanto.com and on there you can go into further detail about my platform and definitely see that I'm coming from a place of making sure that I'm advocating for the voices of this city. I essentially laid on my sword by being outspoken against the expansion of the Geo Immigration Detention Center. It subsequently resulted in me being voted off, but nonetheless, I did it and I have no regrets about it. And I feel that this is the same level of energy and devotion to the things that we believe in, to do it by any means and at all costs. And so I plan in my role as a city council member to do the same thing for you on the commission as I do on the council. Thank you.
On behalf of the Adelanto and Victor Valley Chambers of Commerce, I'd like to once again thank the candidates for their participation in today's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once the Adelanto City Council candidate forums have been completed. Thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe. Have a good evening.